Welcome, everybody, to the, what is today's date? Time's flying October 6th. Planning Commission meeting. Can we have a real call?
Commissioner Chan?
Here.
Commissioner Quigg? Vice Chair Choi?
Here.
Chair Davis?
Here.
For planning commissioners have our present, Commissioner Wong is excused.
Thank you. Time for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Under Agenda Review, do any commissioners have anything to say or anybody on staff?
Good evening, Chair Davis. Just one point on the Agenda Review tonight. We did have a typo on the agenda under Item 4A for the Sequo exemption. The wrong exemption was identified. It is, it's categorically exempt pursuant to 15061B3 because the zoning amendment only will amend the procedures for processing a density bonus application. The full text is correctly identified in the staff report and resolution. I just wanted to point that out on the agenda. We did post a corrected agenda online and in the glass outside, and it is available here in the chamber, identifying the correct Sequo exemption. So just wanted to point that out before we begin.
Alrighty, thank you. Anything else? No. Alrighty. We have one set of minutes from September 15th. Any comments or motion? Kathy? Uh, there you go. Okay.
I don't want, please refresh. Am I on? Okay. Please refresh my memory on the minutes. At the end, when we were announcements, there was an announcement for something on October the 3rd. Can someone please refresh my memory on that one?
Oh, I think Commissioner Wong was saying that the, that was the gateway night market.
Oh. Okay. Thank you. There was something going on on the 3rd. Okay.
Any changes? Any motions?
Make a motion to accept minutes?
You're still a little... We got a motion in a second. Can we vote?
Thank you. Motion passes 4-0.
Alrighty. Next up is Public Communications. This is the time set aside for people that would like to address the Planning Commission on something within our purview but not on tonight's agenda. Any speaker slips or hands on Zoom?
No speaker slips or hands on Zoom.
Alrighty, thank you. We'll move along. Next up is our public hearing, the Density Bonus Ordinance Amendment. And we're to review and recommend to the City Council an amendment to the city's density bonus ordinance to allow local density bonus incentives, in addition to incentives provided by the state bonus law. And this is continued from August 4th. Do you have a staff report?
Good evening, Commissioners. So tonight, we're joined online by our consultants from Harrison Associates. Zare Marin will be presenting the item tonight, and he's joined by Hita Mosesman. Go ahead.
Hi, Zare. Did you want to present the slide show yourself, or did you need, did you want me to share it?
Yeah, thank you. If I could present, that would be appreciated.
Okay.
Yeah, and currently, just a heads up, it's just myself from Harrison Associates. Hita Mosesman should be joining shortly. And let me screen share with you all. Just quick confirmation that you all can see that. Seems to be the case.
Yes.
Great. Alright, well, good evening, Planning Commissioners. As Andy noted, my name is Zare Marin. I'm a project manager at the consulting firm Harrison Associates. The city engaged our firm to analyze a local density bonus incentive that the city can provide in addition to density bonus provided by state law. Real quick note, Andy, looks like Hita just joined and just needs to be promoted to analyst. But myself, Hita, and I believe the city attorney shall be here to answer any questions once we go through this presentation. To start, we want to provide a brief reminder of what density bonus is. For this, there are three important things to consider. First, density bonus is an incentive that allows developers to build more market rate units on a housing project in exchange for making a portion of all units affordable. Density means more units on the site, even more than what the city might regularly allow through its zoning. A bonus comes in the form of being able to build more market rate housing units in exchange for including some affordable, income-restricted units. The bonus is calculated based on the number of total units proposed for the project before any bonus is applied. One final note, density bonus is required from the state and applies to all California cities. The second important thing to know is that all additional units that can be built through the density bonus are market rate. For example, for simple math, say a project meets the incentive requirements, and a developer can build an additional 10 units. All those 10 units can be built as market rates, and there is no requirement to make any of them affordable or income restricted. And this is a factor, or rather, a structure of the state law. The third important thing to know is the benefit of this incentive is that the revenue on the additional market rate units can offset the cost of affordable units, which generates significantly less revenues. The idea is to help make the economics of housing projects work. Density bonus allows developers to balance the cost of providing affordable units with the higher profits on a larger amount of market rate units. And ultimately, the goal is to incentivize overall housing development and increase housing supply. Next, a quick reminder of what inclusionary and affordable housing is in context of the city. Starting with basics, inclusionary housing and affordable housing effectively the same time. They refer to units that are income restricted per levels determined by the state. Cities can create requirements for the inclusion of affordable housing in housing projects. This is called an inclusionary housing requirement. The way we see that play out is that housing projects must make a certain percentage of units affordable. The city requires this for all projects except those with 10 or less units. Those projects are able to pay a fee to the city if the developer does not wish to include any affordable units. An important note, these cities' affordable housing requirements depend on the type of project. For ownership projects or a project where units will be made available for sale, the requirement is that 15% of units be affordable to households with moderate incomes. For rental projects, the city requires that 10% of units be affordable to very low-income households and 5% to low-income households. These affordable units can only produce below-market rents up to a certain level that are determined by the state. And again, the city's requirement for rental housing projects is that 15% of the units be affordable, 10% are very low, and 5% at low. Taking a step back, we're discussing these requirements because they tie directly to the structure of the proposed city density bonus. The proposed city density bonus is structured to make meeting these requirements more appealing to developers. That, in turn, will help the city ensure that necessary affordable housing units are constructed. Before presenting the proposed city density bonus policy, we first need to understand a nuance regarding state density bonus law. I'll say upfront that if this information comes across as a little complicated and convoluted, that's because this area of state law is a little complicated and convoluted. Without of the way, state density bonus is provided on a sliding scale in two tiers. What we show here is Tier 1. And a note that a larger version of the tables that are going to be shown on this slide are provided as an appendix in the memo noted as Attachment 4 in your packet. Tier 1 of state law allows for bonuses on a sliding scale based on the allocation of very low, low, or moderate income units. Here we show a table that summarizes the amount of density bonus that a project can receive based on the noted allocation of affordable units. Tier 1 reflects the original state density bonus scale. Through the passage of AB 1287 that went into effect in 2024, a second tier that provides projects even more density bonus was created. However, for a project to access those Tier 2 bonuses, they must first max out an allocation of affordable units in Tier 1. On the table to the left, we show three subtables. What maxing out looks like is providing an allocation equal to the last row of each subtable. Tying that to specific numbers, that means a project must allocate either 15% of units is very low, 24% of units as low, or 44% of units is moderate in order to access the Tier 2 scale. After doing that, a project can access the Tier 2 scale by allocating additional units as affordable. Of note, this tier only provides additional density bonus for an additional allocation of either very low or moderate income units. This tier does not specify any additional bonus through the allocation of low-income units. That gap in the low-income category is something to be kept in mind with the structure of the proposed city density bonus policy. The city's current density bonus ordinance differs to state law by describing the developer's process to obtain a density bonus in a manner compliant with state law. However, in the last four years, there have been multiple updates to the law, most notably through AB 1287, that created that Tier 2 sliding scale that we just saw. The amendment to the city's density bonus ordinance thus accomplishes two things. First, it updates the ordinance to be consistent with current state law. Second, it adds a proposed city-provided density bonus, which supplements bonuses provided through state law. In this table, we have a summary of the structure of the proposed city-provided density bonus. Similar to the city's affordable housing requirements, the incentive differs for rental projects versus ownership projects. For rental projects, if a project allocates 5% of their units to low-income households, the city would provide a flat density bonus of 15%. This bonus would be in addition to anything the state provides and is aligned with the city's rental affordable housing requirement of 5% of units allocated to low-income households. Additionally, for rental projects, if a project allocates 5% of units as moderate income, the city would provide a density bonus equal to half of that provided through state law in that income category. A reminder that for rental projects, the city does not have a requirement as it relates to moderate income units. This portion of the policy is thus meant to help incentivize the production of this housing type. And of note, the city density bonus is calculated based on the Tier 2 table we saw earlier. For ownership projects, if a project allocates 15% of units to moderate income households, the city would provide a density bonus equal to that provided through state law. This effectively doubles the bonus provided by the state and is calculated based on bonuses provided in the Tier 1 and the Tier 2 tables. And this bonus is aligned with the city's ownership project affordable housing requirement of 15% of units allocated to moderate income households. A note here, the number of units added through the city density bonus is calculated separately from the state density bonus. This is done to achieve maximum rounding benefit and therefore the maximum number of dwelling units. Quick example, if state law provides density bonus that calculates out to 1.5 units and the city policy provides a density bonus that also calculates to 1.5 units, rather than summing that up to 3, each of those 1.5 unit values are rounded up to for a total of four density bonus units. The city density bonus policy would not apply citywide. It would only apply to projects located within the Millbrae Station area boundary or downtown and El Camino Real boundary. To the left, we have a map outlining the boundaries of each area, which is, which is included as Attachment Number 2 in your agenda packet. The city focused this incentive on these areas to facilitate law consolidation, development, and redevelopment in these zones. On April 16th of this year, the city held a local property owner and stakeholder virtual outreach meeting, which was attended by 14 people. That said, the invite was sent to a larger group and made available for access by the larger public. During this meeting, attendees were provided a presentation overviewing the city's inclusionary housing requirements, existing state law, and the proposed city policy. Examples of rental and ownership developments were shared to illustrate how the city-provided density bonus would both complement what is provided by the state and would enhance the financial feasibility of new housing developments. On the right here, we have a summary of feedback that was collected during the outreach session. In summary, several attendees noted that local density bonuses can help incentivize new development, particularly in cities like Millbrae, which have small lots and limited available land. Attendees also provided feedback regarding the potential impact of higher-density developments in the city's downtown region. On the following slides, we'll provide examples that illustrate the city's proposed incentive through two example housing projects. For the first example, we're using a 10-unit for-sale project. For the second example, we're using a 100-unit rental project. Full disclosure, these are round simplistic numbers that we're using to show what the city's incentive would look like. Each property is unique, and the number and type of units that makes sense to build can vary significantly from site to site. And first, we'll start with an example ownership of for-sale projects. A reminder that for these types of projects, the city requires that 15% of units be affordable at the moderate income level. By meeting that requirement, the project gets density bonus from the state. What the city wants to do is add to that to essentially reward the project for meeting its affordable housing requirement. I'll bring your attention down to this table. So with a 10-unit project, in order to meet the city's 15% moderate income or moderate income unit allocation requirement, the project effectively needs to allocate 20% of its units as moderate income. The reason for that being 10 units times 15%, 1.5 units, we need to round that up to 2 rather than 1 in order to meet the requirement. So this project starts with 2 moderate income units and 8 market rate units. What state density bonus provides this project through the allocation of moderate income units is 2 additional market rate units. The city's policy would match the amount that's provided through state density bonus law. So in total, through the allocation of moderate income units, this project would receive 4 market rate units, or could build up to an additional 4 market rate units. And breaking that down one more time, the 20% moderate income unit allocation would allow this project to build 2 extra market rate units through state law and 2 extra market rate units through the city policy. Moving on to an example rental project, a reminder that for rental projects, the city requires that 10% of units be affordable at the very low-income level and 5% be affordable at the low-income level. I'll bring your attention down to this table. Starting with a 100-unit example project, we're looking at very low, low, moderate, and market rate units. It's assumed that this project would seek to allocate at least 15% of their units as very low income. A note that that is above the city's requirement of 10%. The reason for this higher allocation is for this project to be able to access the higher-density bonuses that are available in the Tier 2 scale. The 15% very low-income allocation is essentially one of the max out options in the Tier 1 scale. This project would also include 5% of the units as low income in adherence with the city's requirement. And the project would include 5% of units as moderate income. That's not a requirement by the city, but by including that additional, those additional modern income units, this project can access those Tier 2 additional density bonuses. Starting with what state law provides, through the allocation of very low-income units and moderate income units, this project could build up to an additional 70 market rate units. Factoring in the city's proposed density bonus policy, through the allocation of low-income units and moderate income units, this project could build up to an additional 25 market rate units. So bringing that together, through the current state density bonus law and the proposed city density bonus policy, this project could build up to an additional 95 market rate units. Breaking that down a little further, just making sure all the numbers here match up. The 15% very low-income unit allocation allows this project to build 50 additional market rate units. The 5% low-income unit allocation provides this project up to an additional 15 market rate units through the city incentive. And finally, through the allocation of moderate income units at 5%, the project can build up to an additional 20 market rate units through state law. Just tying here, the 70 is comprised of the 50 noted here and the 20 noted here. And the moderate income allocation also provides the project 10 additional market rate units through the city policy, tying the 25 here to the 15 noted here and the 10 noted here. So big picture, how will the city-provided density bonus incentive help incentivize development? The policy will allow developers to build more market rate units. The additional profit from these market rate units helps cover the cost of including affordable housing in housing developments. Higher profit margins on the additional market rate units can also help offset the cost of law consolidation. Law consolidation is the process of gathering multiple small, multiple smaller pieces of land in order to build a project on a larger piece of land. The reason law consolidation is sought is because it allows for the development of larger projects that can benefit from economies of scale. The process can be expensive, time-consuming, and can increase development risk significantly. The city's policy will allow developers to generate more profit on their housing projects through building more market rate units. Additional profit translates to lower risk for developers and makes their projects more resilient to changes in market fact, market factors such as interest rates, rents, sales prices, and development costs. To help incentivize housing development, many other cities are instituting local policies like the one we're discussing tonight. Notably, the cities of Chico, San Diego, Long Beach, and Culver City have instituted city-specific policies that complement state density bonus law. With that, thank you for your time and for bearing with us on this dense technical topic. We and city staff are here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions? Nathan?
Yeah, this, this incentive program, I think, is very exciting and would, I think, would really kickstart development downtown. I think, which is something that I know we've been working on for a number of years. I wanted to ask, you know, where, there are, I believe there are a number of existing apartment units sprinkled throughout the downtown. And I know that under state law, there's some kind of protection for and mitigation for displacement of any residents who live in those would, any residents who might be displaced by a new development like this. Could you just remind me what, if you happen to have this available, could you remind me what those provisions are? Or, you know, could we? Or I'll just ask the question.
Yeah, so I know those provisions would be separate from the policy that we're discussing tonight. But Hita, is there anything you might be able to add on this?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Hello, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. Yes, there is a requirement that housing units at affordable income levels, which would need to be determined if they are not income-restricted, the income levels of the current residents would need to be determined upon a redevelopment project. And replacement units would need to be provided for the units that are lost as either part of the project or would have to be identified or built or income-restricted in another development. So basically, the law provides for, you know, you can't reduce the number of units available. So not necessarily, even if they're not technically income-restricted with income restrictive covenants adopted as part of the project, you would still need to, for example, if there's a moderate, a household that was moderate income in a non-income-restricted unit, that unit, this household would need to be placed in a unit, whether that was part of the redeveloped project or whether it was somewhere else in the city, so that that household would not be displaced.
Thanks. That's the answer I was looking for.
Other questions?
I have a question regarding this letter from CalHDF. They raised some legal concerns. Could staff talk through to us about that?
They did, and the reason we're here tonight is because what we did is we went back and we updated the code to reflect those, to address those concerns. And I'm not, I'm going to have Hita fill you in on the details, but effectively, you know, we, we followed through on that, and we're pretty confident that the ordinance tonight before you has addressed those. We hit forward this to uh to them. Um we provided them a copy of the agenda packet. At the same time, we provided it to the public and the commissioners. Uh and uh we made sure that they got a copy for review while, you know, at the same time as everyone else. Um and they have not uh provided a response letter uh in turn. We have not heard from them, but um we're 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 confident that we've addressed their concerns. Um Hita, do you want to just touch on some of the details for us? Or Zaire?
I can start and then maybe I'll tap us to Zaire for more of the uh technical details. But just as an overall statement, I would say that the density bonus law in California keeps changing. And so you have an ordinance that you adopt and then it changes the next year and the next year. And so that's, you know, it is, it's not that the city's density bonus ordinance was, you know, out of complete legal compliance um this whole time. It's just that the law keeps changing and it is very difficult to keep up with those changes as they happen. Um and so in general, I can tell you that we work very closely with the city's legal counsel uh brought in specifically for this purpose to um go over section by section of the density bonus ordinance um and confer and ensure that we've met all of the current requirements. But I would also defer to Zaire to talk about uh maybe some more of those details if I've skipped anything. Zaire?
Yeah, I'll just add that uh a majority of our, a majority of Cal HDF's um feedback uh didn't relate to the proposed city density bonus policy language uh largely focused on language regarding waivers, concessions and I believe parking requirements and some design standard um components. So that's um majority of our time spent with the city's legal counsel was refining that language.
So you said this was updated per that review. What was changed?
So um Zaire, do you want to give the the fine details of the changes? Because the the lan- we did not provide a red line to the commissioners tonight. But uh if you want to touch on the details.
Yeah, absolutely. And if, I'll just take a second to pull up our red line version of the uh density bonus ordinance, uh which I believe can also be provided to the planning commission group after this call. Um so one quick second here.
And just while he's bringing that up, just to kind of a high level overview is that a lot of this was clarifications, also updating it to comply, you know, to identify the changes in state laws. Zaire said it does change frequently. The codes, the state laws have been changing annually and it's really hard for cities to keep up. And so sometimes when we start work on these things, the next thing you know, there's a new law in effect. And um and so um uh we did do a number of um just clarifying changes. And I think if Zaire brings up the red line, you can just see kind of a, just at a glance. This is one of the most complicated, actually, this is the most complicated ordinance um I think I've worked on in my entire career. And it's not because of our end of it. We want to make it as simple as possible for the public, for developers, for applicants. But it's really because it's a very complicated state law to begin with. Um and when they added the tier two standards recently, that that just added a whole nother level of complexity. As you know, we were planning on uh doing this. It's identified in our housing element. It's a policy, something that we wanted to do. We want to incentivize the development of uh affordable housing in the city. We saw this as a means to do so. And of course, um you know, with the uh the passage of um I always forget the number, A B. Oh my goodness, uh twelve eighty seven. Um you know, sometimes that, sometimes our plans get a little bit changed by the state and you have to come back and adjust things, but um uh you know, like I said with that, I'll 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 hand it off back off to to Zaire.
Yeah, and just for for visual reference, I'll share the red line version of the ordinance. Um it's And so hopefully you all can see this, the work document. Wait, what's the case? Looks like it's case. Alright, so this initial opening language was um updated to that, we we could actually spend a lot of time on this, but I'll go try to stay high level and can pause for questions if if needed. Uh majority of this language was updated to include the proposed city density bonus policy. So you can see reference here to the city's density bonus policy and the fact that this applies specifically to the Millbury Station area and the downtown and El Camino Real specific plan area. And specifying that the city policy is, city policy and bonus is separate from state law. Uh this language was removed here. Let's cross out and zoom in just a little bit more here. Um this language, majority of the language that was removed here and added was either to update the ordinance to be compliant with current state law or to specify some of the specificities of the city's specific density bonus policy. Keep going through this. Here, we're specifying the application form process that developers uh should follow in order to request the city's specific density bonus policy and the state density bonus policy. Apologies for the silence. I'm trying to describe the changes here in as concise of a manner as possible. Here broadly, we're specifying aspects of the acreage and the total number of units for a project. This requested incentives component, this language is largely modified to be uh to better align with current state law. And same case here with the requested waivers. And the most significant changes were made in section two regarding the density bonus. And this largely boils down to specifying in the code that this new proposed city policy is being added. And in the subsection two C describing how it is that the policy applies both to rental projects and ownership projects and how that should be calculated for uh the different income categories that we're considering. That's uh the allocation of uh low income units or modern income units, uh what we went through in detail in the presentation earlier. And that extends through this section here. Also added language within this specific section of the city's ordinance to note that all projects uh need to be developed in a manner that is consistent with the airport land use compatibility uh plan. Add some added and refined language here regarding incentives and concessions to better align with state law. Kind of the same case with the waivers here. And this is this is a little hard to describe. Uh some of this removal of the language is actually because we kind of consolidated the ordinance language to build upon it. I believe for this section in particular, we built out portions of section three. So it was found that this language wasn't needed because otherwise it would be redundant. Since we're updating the ordinance, uh we spent some time on the affordable housing agreement section. Um this actually wasn't a section that Cal HDF provided feedback on. Uh these are adjustments that uh city's legal counsel recommended as we were going through each of these sections in detail. The affordable unit standards, uh so this was a section that Cal HDF had some feedback on uh regarding uh refinements to better align with uh city law, or not city law, state law. And same case here with the parking standards. That was a majority, but go ahead.
Oh, keep, keep going. I I was just gonna jump in, but go ahead.
Sure thing. Um and those were the majority of the edits. Um the rather, those are all the, we passed through all the sections where Cal HDF provided specific feedback. Uh these other sections were uh refinements that uh uh the city's legal counsel recommended. That's what we're going through this.
So I would say that that when you look at the red lines, it's incredibly confusing. That's one of the reasons why we didn't provide it to you. If you look at the clean copy of the ordinance before you tonight, it's a lot easier to read. It's a lot more simplified. We put a lot of thought into the wording. And like I said, uh uh it's very important to have ordinances that are very clean, readable and understandable. My my philosophy when you write a zoning code update, no matter what it is, it's not what you add, it's what you take away. Um when you add more language, it gets more complicated, more convoluted. So the goal is to say what needs to be said with as little language as possible and to use it in plain language. And so that's, that's a lot of these changes that you see before you tonight because as I said, this is a very complicated ordinance. The reason why is we have to we have to craft it underneath state law within the framework of state law. And it's not, it's not the clearest state law section. And as as I said earlier, um the uh the bill that amended it, uh one, two, eight, what's the number? I always forget the name, twelve eighty seven. Um and and so we feel like that this version before you this evening is um the best product moving forward. It's a lot simpler, a lot, a lot easier to read than the than the version that we saw. Uh and we do appreciate the comments that we received from Cal HDF. Um and I, we're very um, we're very confident moving forward with the revisions that we have before you tonight.
Thank you for all that work. I I would argue that we always need to see the red lines. The reason we postponed our last meeting to this meeting was because changes were going to be made and it was not clear at all what changed. And you should include the red line and the clean copy because it, we need to know how it changed. I assume the spirit and the goals of the ordinance were, are still intact. And of course, I appreciate better writing and more concise language, but we, we can't do our job if we don't know what changed. So next time, please give us a red line.
No, I agree. Uh more specifically, I have a question on the incentives and concessions. So with the changes, is it fair to say that it limits or at least changed what comes before this commission uh with respect to discretionary approvals um on projects that are seeking density bonus?
Sorry, could you repeat the first part of the question?
So with respect to incentives and and concessions, right? It seems like any project that is applying for density bonus law would it essentially, there is no, it's not up to us to grant concessions or incentives or to to weigh in on whether we, because there are no longer
Yeah, there there wouldn't, the decision of whether or not to allow it wouldn't be in the purview of your decision.
Commission, okay, alright.
It would, it would have to follow the law, but it wouldn't be a decision point for the commission.
Okay.
Um and I, the way I understand it, staff has already reviewed everything by the time it comes to us uh with all of this detail. And you'll just say, there was a density bonus applied. You might say tier one or tier two, but you've done all the calculations. It's not up us to check it out. We've got people that uh looked at our last one, uh because you have to send it out to everyone. So they looked at it and it's not very clear. So we have to make it more clear or clearer. So but I I agree with um Chair Davis that we got this and it's like, what did we really do to change? And how much of it did we change? And it looks like it changed a lot. It wasn't just a few minor changes. No wonder you needed a couple of months to do.
Yeah, I think, I think the key point is that what you reviewed last time is there. Um but the wording is different. Um but the the structure is still there. The the standards are still there.
Yeah, and it it says uh same consultant did the the first one and now they've made corrections to it.
We we've been using Harris from the beginning.
Okay.
Anyone else? No? Do we do public comment again this time? We didn't do it last time. I couldn't remember. Okay. Well, then let's do some public comment. Is anybody out there?
There are no hands raised on Zoom or speaker slips.
Okay.
There's nobody out there.
Well, but there's could be somebody here. Yes, so can we close the public comment? We have a motion?
I move to close.
Use the little box.
Oh gee. I move to close the public comment.
Okay, well, you seconded it. Nathan beat you.
I would be close, yeah.
That's okay.
That'll work. That'll work.
I agree.
All right, you can, we can vote now.
Thank you. Motion passes four zero. Public comment is now closed.
All right, thank you. All right, any further discussion or motions?
Just following on that main point we we talked about, I would make sure that when this goes to the city council, the red line version is also included.
I I
I think that when when the, when your recommendation goes to councils, just to clarify, they will be receiving what you recommend tonight.
Right.
Um if we provide that red line between your first and second version of council, it would not um it would not help their decision. Um in my, it's my recommendation. I think that would just confuse the matter fur- further. Um but I I do recognize your point about having it uh at the meeting.
For us.
For for you, but I think for the city council's purpose, they will be reviewing what you ultimately recommend to them. So if you provide them a draft version, I don't think that will assist them in their decision. Um but I certainly can do that if that's the recommendation.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Just to clarify, the council hasn't seen the draft we saw in our previous meeting.
No.
No, they have not.
Okay, then
Yeah.
they don't need the red line then. Okay. But we, it needs to, should be, somebody should be able to review that. The public should see it. If it can go with our minutes, that would be fantastic.
I will, uh yes, we can actually accommodate that, yes.
How about that? Okay, cool. Thank you. All right.
I I'll just say that for myself, I mean, I, 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 I see uh commit uh Chair Davis and Commissioner Quigg where you're coming, well, all the three of you, why you want the, wanted the red lines. And I think I would have appreciated them too, but I also feel like when I was reading through the ordinance for the second time, I I did notice how much more streamlined it was and how many fewer questions I had about the details uh compared to the first time we had to review it. So I certainly felt that um I appre- I, I very much appreciate how much more readable this is and I would have no problem rec- uh uh making a recommendation of the clean second copy to council for consideration.
All right, do we have a motion? There's one. Do we have a second?
A second.
Uh so I move that we approve uh and recommend to the city council an amendment to the city's density bonus ordinance to allow local density bonus incentives in addition to the ones granted by state law.
All right, we're good. Vote.
Thank you. Motion passes four zero.
Alrighty, thank you very much. New business? We haven't had any staff updates?
I have a couple of um staff updates for you. These are also flyers in your packet tonight. Um the first is we have an upcoming planning commissioners training on Wednesday, October twenty ninth. Um I, that you all have been invited to. Um this is a training done in conjunction with Cal APA, uh twenty one elements uh and Home for All San Mateo County um on climate resilience. Uh again, that's Wednesday, the twenty ninth. They do have a a request to register by online by Wednesday, October twenty second. You're all welcome to do that uh on your own individually. Otherwise, you know, you can certainly email Michelle and I, but it'd probably be easier if you did it yourself. Um so that is, that training is available for you and we encourage you all to attend. Of course, if you do attend, please adhere to the Brown Act and uh you know, make sure you're uh you're following the standard protocol at such an event when others are present, other commissioners are present. Um and then in addition, um on the topic of the Brown Act, we are also having an annual commission and committee training uh on Wednesday, October fifteenth from six to eight. on Wednesday, October fifteenth from six to eight here in this room. And the training will include the Brown Act, rules of order, public records, roles of commissions and committees, government ethics laws, and the appropriate use of public resources. So that flyer is also in your packet. There is no RSVP for that. We just expect you to be here. So we really appreciate you attending these trainings. And I think with that, that is all I have for this evening for staff announcements.
No, no project updates of anything that you can think of?
Our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, I'm sorry, Monday, October twentieth. And on that night, we expect there to be consideration, there's going to be a consideration of land use determination regarding a legal non-conforming use. And so that, that would be scheduled on the twentieth. That's my assumption is that we'll have it at that meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Like, how big a project are we talking about here?
I don't, I don't want to preclude your decision, so I'll.
Okay.
Okay, then are there any announcements from commissioners?
Volunteers of the Year Event, Ward's Dinner is on the seventeenth. There's still time for some reservations.
Just wanted to wish a happy mid-autumn festival to everyone who was observing today.
Did anybody look at that moon tonight?
Oh, gorgeous.
I mean, it is like twice the size of a. I mean, I came down and I went, oh my God. My eyes went. I tried to take pictures of those, but they just never come out quite the same.
All right. That's it. And we're adjourned?